Morning, everyone. This is a Delaware County Commissioner meeting. It's Monday, May 22. Time is 9:01. Let's open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and the two republics of which is one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ed, could you call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Henry.
Here.
Ms. King.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
We have approval of the minutes for May 18, 2023.
Second.
A motion is second for the minutes. Roll call, please.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes. Next, we have presentations to the Commissioners of Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Good morning. Can you hear me all right there? My name is Colby Gray, and I'm here on behalf of the Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District, along with Claire Burr, our District Director, John Newby, our Treasurer, and Tara Westler-Henry, our ISDA Support Specialist. And we've prepared a three-minute video that we would like to share with you that provides an overview of our organization and some recent accomplishments that we've made. And after sharing the video, I'd like a few minutes of your time to discuss some of the handouts I passed out prior to the meeting.
That our soil and water resources play a crucial role in the health of our rural economies, food and energy systems, and overall quality of life in Delaware County. We are dedicated to providing property owners with the necessary resources they need to effectively and sustainably manage their land. The district's operations are overseen by an elected Board of Supervisors consisting of agricultural producers, rural business owners, and local experts that volunteer their time to improve our community. In 2019, the district helped to keep 16 million pounds of soil out of our local streams, 10 times more than in 2014. These actions help conserve farm ground, which is one of our most valuable economic resources. In 2020, Delaware County farmers implemented sustainable practices on 20,000 acres to prevent erosion and filter runoff, a 700% increase from 2016. The impact of practices like winter cover crops is cleaner water for both wildlife and Delaware County citizens. Since 2019, three dangerous and unnatural low-head dams were removed or modified on the White River, which has led to safer recreational access to the White River. In the last 20 years, soil and water has raised $5 million in funding, which has been reinvested into the county, helping hundreds of small business owners that make up our local agricultural economy. Soil and Water partners with organizations like the Indiana State Department of Agriculture, the Natural Resources Conservation Service, the Farm Service Agency, the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, Purdue Extension, and numerous local foundations. We collaborate with these organizations to implement key initiatives. Although there are many funding programs available to assist property owners in these initiatives, the extensive paperwork required may be overwhelming for some individuals. So Soil and Water started a free program that gives landowners information they need to begin the conservation planning process. Once given permission by a landowner, a program specialist from Soil and Water examines the land and documents site features to develop a tentative plan to improve the water and soil health through different sustainable practices. Then, the specialist meets with the landowner to go over the plan and find specific goals based on what the landowner wants to do. After that, Soil and Water will direct the landowner to people who can help with funding and educating. We're also committed to making the public aware of the importance of maintaining healthy soil and water in our area. We've hosted several events open to the public with keynote speakers sharing their expertise on sustainable practices. We've produced numerous videos and news articles promoting these practices and have worked to keep our website and social media pages up to date to keep the public more informed and engaged in what we're doing. The health of our community's natural resources is an essential part of the well-being of Delaware County and its citizens. And the Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District, in partnership with our rural community, is making big strides towards a brighter future. But we must continue to reach more landowners and grow participation in our programs. We have an opportunity to become a state and regional leader in the conservation of our natural resources. And we hope you will join us in sustaining the health of our county's soil and water now and for generations to come.
So, obviously, in summary of the video, you know, we have been successful in recent years at securing a lot of state and federal funding to benefit rural landowners. But unfortunately, a lot of those, like, project-based grants don't support, like, our administrative position. And so, there are a couple of handouts I passed out. The first, you can see the one up in the upper right-hand corner, it says "District Director" on it. So, these are like a list of items that we must fulfill annually in order to maintain, like, good standing with the state Soil Board, which is like our regulatory body as a local county government. And every year, we struggle kind of with time and financial constraints to meet these obligations with just having part-time staff. On the second page of the handout there, it mentions at the upper right-hand corner statewide funding. Essentially, Delaware County Government is the only county in Indiana that doesn't financially support its SWCB, and it hasn't done so since 2008. We would like to be placed back on the annual county budget in order to fund our administrative position specifically. With the full-time position, we can fulfill our requirements and further benefit this community by implementing our strategic plan. And as a letter we stated in the letter we sent in March, we are definitely requesting support for our staff position. We hope that our district's accomplishments, that was, you know, in the video of the last 15 years, reflects our capacity as an organization and our dedication to this county despite our loss of funding in 2008. And through your support, we want to continue to improve the health of Delaware County farmland and our natural resources. Thank you for your time. Obviously, this is just one in hopefully ongoing discussions about this issue, but we're certainly open to answering any questions you might have this time.
How much are you requesting?
Fifty thousand.
Yeah, fifty thousand. So, again, on that list, there's quite a range from counties of a similar population, of a similar acres. So, a lot of counties that might have this population amount of acres are kind of close to $100,000 contributions they make. We're asking for 50,000.
I'm thinking if we could find that money somewhere until we could put it in the budget, then we would get back on track because that is kind of embarrassing, being the only county in the state that doesn't support all this tremendous work. But, John, would we be able to either use Edit or ARP one time?
Probably be better to use Edit. If we have funds in Edit, and that's something we've been working at, take a look at what's going on in Edit.
What does the Director make now? Because it says the 50,000 annually to support salary of the District Director. What does he make now, and how much of this 50,000 will go to the Director?
The District Director is currently like part-time, and it varies based off the amount of grants that we can pull in and the amount of past-through dollars that we have. So, it is quite a bit of a range.
Do you all have an average?
I can tell you what we've learned from looking at soil and water districts across the state, you know, and they average anywhere from like $45,000 to $65,000, depending on the types of technical skills they have and what they're being asked to do for their specific county. And I can send a follow-up that actually has the data. I'm just going off of memory.
I'd like to know what they make and how much of this 50,000 will go to them.
And Tara, do you know that number better than I?
For what?
For the average, like, the average that the District Director makes.
You said the average has been around the 45 mark. On this county size, we usually see two to three staff per district. They have a technician, sometimes they have an urban specialist, an educator, and then they also have the executive director or the directors you see there. And then they are accountable to the State Board of Accounts, too, given the division of state government.
I just don't want to give 50,000, and then people come back and say 40 of it went to the Director, and 10 went to something else. Because we've had stuff like that happen before, or we give different programs a certain amount of money, and we're thinking it's going toward the program, and it actually goes more to the administration. So, I would like to sort of see the number. And do you know how much you're looking at moving from the 50,000 over to the Director?
I mean, yeah, the plan with the majority, you know, obviously, we're going to work with you to come up with a plan that is, makes sense. But currently, that was the goal, is to pay for their time and their salary, full-time staff.
I don't have a problem with helping you guys. I just want to make sure that the money's not going to the administrating part, you know, because you have other things in here you say you want to work with. So, I want to, I would like to have a breakdown of, okay, how much is going to the Director? How much is going to the programming?
Understood.
Are you guys familiar with the county's budgeting process?
Not vaguely.
We need to get you familiarized with that because that will be coming up soon.
Very good.
At one time, it was just a line item, John, when you were Commissioner.
It was.
And you remember?
Council stopped that and removed that in 2008.
Yeah, hard times and then it cut.
Full-time staff. You had a technician and a administrator.
There was two staff that was in there.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, all we really should have to do is have Sarah add that back into our budget for this year, and then have somebody from their staff come up.
Come up and speak.
Got it, good.
Yeah, and we could prorate our donation this year.
Yeah.
And then, yeah.
Like I said, I have no problem with helping you guys. I would just like to see where the money is.
Understood.
Give me a couple of weeks to work with Sarah on the Edit Plan and see what we can find, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thanks for your nice presentation.
Roger McConnell. America's Hometown Band.
Thank you for allowing me to make my presentation and speak to the cause of America's Hometown Band. I represent approximately 100 musicians that play with us from time to time. And this year, we have scheduled 12 programs in Muncie and Delaware County. Specifically, we are embarking on some new locations. Well, I should say a return on one. We are going back to the fair this year. My colleague in the Jazz Band Program, Larry McWilliams, fellow retiree from Ball State University, is going to have a program on Wednesday of the fair week. And we are playing an agricultural visit, Tony Winery, if you please, two different times. Tom Rogers has been so good to schedule us there for his people and with his people. And also, we are playing several city locations, particularly Cannon Commons about three times. And our culminating is Old Washington Street and West Side Park Concert on the 10th of August. The schedule that I filed with you folks is one that we were able to almost complete last year. We had about a four-year hiatus of activity, and in part due to some of my personal illness and also the COVID shutdown coincided with that as well. So, we're back, I think, this year stronger than ever. I'd like to have Stan Gudell get a new box of reeds and join us sometime soon. He's a marvelous, if you didn't know, he's a marvelous world-class clarinet player, and degreed no less, right? So, and we are going to play at the Tony Winery some of our new additions in the way of ensembles, our clarinet choir ensemble, as well as the flutes have been quite active in our community, playing at Westminster and Friends Church, also on several other occasions, their own private concerts. So, it's a big umbrella in lots of ways. We typically have a band of about 60 to 80 players. And our big event is the 4th of July at Cannon Commons prior to the fireworks. And we also note that we are playing the repertoire of 1900, first organized in 1902 as an American Federation's of Music Band, and is the continuous, only continuous, I believe, musical ensemble that has, with a couple of exceptions, is still in its original origin. What I am here today for is to ask for the same kind of support you gave me last year. We've coupled that with a lot of private gifts and also the city's support and a lot of donors that are in the band and also community folks. I must say always thank you to the financial institutions and the foundations that have supported us so well. So, the $25,000 I'm asking for your support is a part of that. That comes from the, last year, it came from the Edit Funds. I must tell you, Tom Rogers at Tony Winery said, finally, he can get some bang back for all the money he collects. It's a part of what he does. You might note that that is a lovely setting for an outdoor concert, and we're planning that again two different times, the 22nd and the 29th of July. And my hope is that if you folks will accept and support, that we might designate one of those two times as a Delaware County Commissioner Open House Night. And in which case, I know Tom would be pleased about that. He has lots of quality food trucks and beverages. It's a beer and wine locally supported, our local brewery, as well as the Tony Winery as well. So, my hope is that you will continue your support. We are one of the few arts organizations that is active. I have been involved since 1988. I followed Paul McDaniel, one of our stellar musicians and teachers in the community. And for that particular reason, I hope that you will come enjoy us at the Tony Winery, at the Delaware County Fair, at Cannon Commons, and West Side Park, and all those other things. What does your money go for? If we buy some musicians, we, Oboes and Soons, we have to pay those players, and particularly Stan doesn't work for free either. He's a card-carrying guy as well. And my hope is that we will be able to have enough money to buy a new soundboard, which playing at all of these places. It's the soundboard we had is about 12 years old, and it's seen its last leg. We hope also that we will enhance some of our percussion instruments as well. So, it's a multi-kind of operation between city, private citizens, and the county. I encourage your support.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. And don't forget, May 29th, is it 10:30, 11 o'clock?
We don't miss a civic event, ever. In fact, I don't think in the history of the band, even before I took over, there was ever a turn-down of patriotic events. May 29th is a big one. And my present role is to sit on the back row and play euphonium. Dr. Ruth, Charles Ruth, and my friend David Gilliam are also, and I should say former student, are also conductors. For the first time, one of my colleagues from Ball State, Lynn Napoleon, is going to conduct the band, too. So, it's, don't forget that. Don't forget the September 11th celebration at Menetrista. All five of those things are county-related. And for that particular reason alone, your money won't quite cover that, but it sure goes a long way.
Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will work on this also in the Edit.
Okay.
We'll consider both of those for the Edit for the next meeting, okay?
We'll let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Next is Together DM Plan.
Good morning. I'd have to first start off by saying I always enjoy hearing the Hometown Band play at EB Ball. And I, too, would like to see Stan play the clarinet. Stan's one of our former Neighborhood Leader of the Year awards for the IDEA Conference, so good to see you here. I'm here representing the Muncie Action Plan. Mitch Isaacs was not able to attend this morning. He had a prior engagement. Asked to come back again. We had a discussion along the lines of the document that I passed out and the work that we're doing to move forward the Together DM Comprehensive Plan, and also to gather names from the county so that we make sure that we have representatives from the small towns and farms in the county as we move this plan forward. I think we all know that MARTA's Celebration of Life on Saturday, a great loss to our community, and MARTA was really the individual that was moving this work forward. And we, as a nonprofit board, have two part-time staff members that are really at capacity at this point. We're, we partnered with the City of Muncie, I'm sure you're aware, for the Neighborhoods ARP funding. So, we are operating that million-dollar micro-granting process through the neighborhoods. So, that's really taking an entire staff member, part-time staff member's time. And then our administrative coordinator is in charge of making sure that we're meeting the goals of the Strategic Investment Plan and the administrative work that it takes to operate the nonprofit, like grant writing and reporting. So, our other request, other than to bring names back to the Comprehensive Plan Coalition, was for funding. So, we were looking for $10,000 in funding so that we could support the administrative side of moving the Comprehensive Plan, the Together DM Comprehensive Plan, forward.
James, you were working on this a little bit?
I sat down with Sarah, and we went through the Edit Plan, and we did find the funds to do this.
For 10,000.
So, I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion to approve the request and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Summer Recovery. Dan White.
Good morning, Dan White, currently a member of the Delaware County Fair. Good news, we're not asking you to open up your wallet this morning to us. I talked to Sherri Reagan maybe a month ago, and she brought over a couple of ladies. And there is a, through the mental health, there's a division called 280's Ministry. And they have 14 different locations in the state of Indiana. And they are doing a celebration at eight different locations this summer. And Muncie was picked as one of them. So, I just wanted to inform the board and the public that they're more than welcome to come out. This will be for recovering alcoholics, recovering drug addicts. This is going to be held the day after Memorial Day, which will be Tuesday, May 30th. It's going to start in the evening at 5:30 and go until 8 o'clock. Weather permitting, they're going to use two of our grandstands that are portable. And we're going to set them up outdoors at the Royal King South stage. If rain is looking like it might be in the forecast, we're going to quickly move the grandstands and put them in the memorial building for that night. They will have music, they will have food, they will have keynote speakers, they will have seminars. And this is all about recovery and help them go further in life with the recovery program. And so, I just wanted everybody to be aware of that, and everybody is more than welcome to come out and help us facilitate all this that evening. Thank you.
Thanks for hosting them.
Yeah, thanks for doing that, Dan. All right, next, we have Contracts and Agreements for Approval, United Consulting.
Yes, this is a supplemental agreement for the Redevelopment Commission working on the wastewater sewer extension as part of the ARP Plan out in Delville for the Shell Building. The building is going to occur out by the Office Park. This is for the stormwater and stormwater work in that particular project. So, it's part of the ARP Plan.
It's your pleasure.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve the agreement with United and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes. Next, we have Ashton Land Surveyors.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Van Ice, and I'm from Ashton Land Surveyor. Excuse me, I have three different parcels. The first one is the Swaby Platte. It is located at 9681 South County Road 700 West, which is south of 67. They're doing a one-lot division of a property. It's to take the house off the larger tract of ground. We have gone through the putting process, and we have approval from the Platte Committee. I just need your signatures to be able to dedicate the road right of way of 700 West.
It's your pleasure.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion for approval and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, the second one is located on 100 North. The address is 12615 East County Road 100 North, which is on the corner of 100 North and 800 East. They are dividing off the house and two acres around the house to sell it. Again, we are doing the one-lot administrative division, administrative platte. We do have Platte Committee approval, so we need to dedicate the strip of the land in front of the house on 100 North.
So, move.
Sorry.
We have a motion to approve that request and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you. And the third one is on the corner of 1200 North and Highway 3. The address is 1787 East County Road 1200 North. The property, again, is being divided as a two-acre division. And, I believe, and the, again, we have gone through the Platte Committee. We do have approval, and we're dedicating the road right of way in front of the structure at 1200 North.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve that request and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Vector Control Program. Jamie Bain.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jamie Bain, Health Department Administrator. The agreement that you guys should have before you is regarding our vector control program. So, in years past, we've always maintained anywhere from two to four individuals on staff that are licensed in category 8 pesticide application. With some changes in staff, we found ourselves this summer with no one currently licensed and no opportunities to get licensed until early next year, I believe. So, what we're looking to do is enter into an agreement to have an individual who is licensed oversee our program. The rules put out by the Office of the State Chemist allow for an off-site individual to provide oversight and direction on any to provide oversight and direction on any kind of pesticide application, as long as it's done in writing and site-specific. So we have an agreement with someone who would be willing to do that for us. An example of how that would work, if we receive a complaint, we would go out, take a couple pictures, get some basic information, like if it's an in-ground pool, we would give them an estimate of the surface area of that pool, an estimate of the depth. He would provide us guidance on what specifically, what product to treat with and at what quantity. This is all stuff that we know and can calculate internally, but the red tape says we have to have a licensed individual tell us. Additionally, this individual would be doing tick surveillance for us. The state of Indiana is looking for an increase in that going on across the state, and we have not had that in Delaware County in at least over 10 years probably that we've done that. So we'll have some tick drags being conducted by him this summer, as well as training us on how to do those tick drags so that we can take it on next summer, under our own licensed individual.
This is all funded through your department, correct?
Yes.
John, did you have time to?
I did. Looks fine, I've got plenty of ticks on my property too, so.
Yeah, nasty.
Yeah, I found some when I was turkey hunting, so.
I think it's a good idea. It's your pleasure.
I'll so move.
Second.
A motion to approve the agreement and a second. Rule call, please.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Visitors Bureau ARP Recommendations.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Kirby, the CEO of the Muncie Visitors Bureau, and I'm here to address the discussion we've had relative to the Delaware County Convention and Tourism Commission and the appropriation of ARP funds. We have been through the final stages of analyzing the applications, and there was a deadline of April 1 for those applications to have final information presented. All information has been put in place, all is accurately been basically established, and with that, we make recommendation for approval of funding support through ARP dollars for three remaining organizations that had put applications in. That would be Trailside Golf LLC in the amount of $49,000, in addition to China Panda in the amount of $49,000, and the Cardinal Hills Golf Course in the amount of $49,000.
You've done your homework, and we appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
And I'm sure these families.
A motion to approve all three.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve all three requests and a second. Rule call, please.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
What will happen now is I'll prepare the grant agreement for all three recipients, send it to them. I've got their email address and the applications here. They'll sign the grant agreement, send it back to me. I'll get it to Sarah, have Commissioner Henry sign it, and then once Commissioner Henry signs it, Sarah will prepare the claim to the auditor's office for payment. Then I'll reach out about six months to check how they're doing and go over that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Delaware County AT&amp;T Contract, Jim Plute.
Morning, Jim Plute from the IT Department. Before you provided you a contract with AT&amp;T, which will allow us to continue to carry some of our Centrex lines for service. Most of those are from the 911 office, that's their admin lines that they use down there, and the other lines are for the elevator lines, which are required by the Fire Department to have in all of our elevators, the Health Department, County Building, and at Justice Center. We've been working with this, on this agreement for, since probably October, November of last year, and trying to get everything in line, and AT&amp;T's showing some other options we might want to go with. We decided that the other option would not work, especially with the 911. So after some emails in the last couple weeks, back and forth on them to get something moving on this, this contract is for 36 months, and it runs $82.50 a month to manage those lines. The minimum lines that they charge for is 11, and I think we got six that we actively got running now, so. Once this agreement's put in place, then we will sit down and start negotiating with them on the outstanding balance that we have with AT&amp;T for the old Centrex system, and getting that cleared off and get resolution for a quite large amount of money that they're keep charging us every month.
Is this, is this $82.50 per line or $82.50 total per month?
Per month.
For all six lines or 11?
For all six, yes.
Okay. And there still is an issue resolving as to the other Centrex contract, right?
Yes.
The one that expired 2019.
Yeah, once this is put in place, then they'll sit down and start working with the county on, agreeing on an amount of how much the county really owes.
Okay, because AT&amp;T can't multitask, right? They have to do one after another.
Right.
All right.
I move.
It's your pleasure.
I move way up. As presented.
A motion for the approval of this contract and a second. Rule call, please.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have Ordinance for First Reading, Ordinance Number 2023-015, creating a new fund for the local public health services.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Jamie Bain, Health Department Administrator. The particular ordinance that I've submitted to you guys is for the creation of a new fund to house some, what we hope is incoming state money that we would receive January of next year. So separately, I've provided, and I think you guys have a copy up there, of the funding proposals for this. So the term, what is it here, Local Public Health Services Fund, this money is coming about as a result from the Governor's Public Health Commission and the work they've done over the past couple of years. This is a game-changing amount of money for everyone in public health across the state of Indiana. So 2024 Delaware County is eligible for a minimum of $1.3 million that we would receive from this. 2025, that goes up to $2.6 million. This funding will replace funding that we receive annually that has typically been around $116,000. So you can see the big difference there. It's being kind of doled out across the state proportionate to population. So every county is receiving a significant amount that will change the way they do things. The document you have there spells out some of the funding requirements, the programs that the money has to be applied to, the breakdown of how we have to spend 60% towards one group of functions and 40% towards another. All, that we'll be able to do that pretty easily. The back has a little bit of information about, it spells out, as you're aware, the Commissioners have until September 1st to conduct a vote to opt in or opt out of this funding. So first of all, I'd like to formally request that you opt in. The ordinance I have before you today, as I see it, is one small puzzle piece in this overall process, so the creation of the fund won't obligate you to vote yes, but it will allow me to create a budget for the expenditure of these funds to have submitted by July 1st. And of course, it would be up to you after that fact whether you wanted to vote in support or against receiving the money. Happy to answer any questions you guys have about it.
There is a, there is a county match.
The county match would be what the county, the county council lots to us every year. Initially, for 2024, they want an average of the past three years of funding. So off the top of my head, that's probably right around $840,000, which is less than what we received this past year, 2023. Going into 2025, it's a 20% match, which the bare minimum that the county would have to provide is $545,000. So if we were funded at 545, that's still looking at a over $300,000 savings to the county and the amount of money that the county has to put out. Now, one stipulation, I will be requesting of council that in 2025, they budget us at the same amount as they do in 2024, roughly $840,000, as a kind of a precaution while we ensure that 2026 and forward is going to be funded by the legislature. So the state is confident that that money will proceed. To me, it makes sense. I don't know if I'd want to be the politician who funds a ton of new public health services across the state and then two years later takes them all away. But I would be asking that the council budget us at the 840 for 2026 while we determine if we'll receive additional funding. Our intent would not be to spend that full amount. We would turn that back, whatever we could save, but it's a protection. As you know, if council cuts us to the 540, there is no going back to the over $800,000. That money would be handed out elsewhere. So it's a protection to ensure that public health can continue in Delaware County.
So today, we'll be introducing the ordinance.
Make a motion to introduce Ordinance Number 2023-015.
Second.
A motion for the introduction, creating the new fund, 2023-015, and a second. Rule call, please.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Next, we have Resolutions for Approval, Resolution 2023-016. John, would you mind reading that, please?
Sure. Resolution 2023-016, Resolution of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners honoring the passing of paramedic Kurt Matthews and naming EMS Station Number Two in Yorktown in his honor. Whereas Delaware County has provided emergency medical services to the citizens of Delaware County for approximately 50 years, and whereas the emergency medical services lost a skilled, talented, valuable paramedic, Kurt Matthews, in his sleep at EMS Station Number Two in Yorktown while on duty serving the citizens of the county, and whereas Kurt Matthews has dedicated his life to public safety and public service, having been a lifetime member of the Delville Fire Department, member of the Delville Police Department, and for the last 17 years, a paramedic of Delaware County Emergency Medical Services, and whereas as a paramedic, Kurt Matthews was the type of paramedic that all patients wanted in an emergency situation because of skill and training. He also was a mentor to all the paramedics and emergency medical technicians that have worked for the county over the past 17 years. His personality, camaraderie, and mentorship will be missed by the Delaware County Emergency Medical Services, as well as everyone in the community. And whereas Kurt Matthews leaves surviving him a daughter, Madeline Grace, a brother, Jay Matthews, and nephew Chad Matthews, as well as lots of cousins, friends, and a special cousins, friends, and a special friend, Kathy, and whereas Delaware County Emergency Medical Services lost a special asset, a mentor in Kurt Matthews, and the members of the Emergency Medical Services will always be reminded of his dedication and passion that was the Delaware County EMS by naming the EMS Station Number Two in Yorktown in his honor. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Delaware County, Indiana, one, that EMS Station Number Two in Yorktown will now and forever be named Kurt Matthews' Memorial Emergency Medical Services Station. The Board of Commissioners shall commence to create a plaque and assign a fix to the building of the EMS Station Number Two, showing the name and honoring Kurt Matthews and all of his work and commitment to the Delaware County Emergency Medical Services. Three, a copy of this resolution shall be made part of the permanent record of the activities of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, duly adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Delaware County at a regularly scheduled public meeting held on this 22nd day of May 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-016 in memory of Kurt Matthews.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes, that's a very fitting honor. The services out at Delville Station was very, there were very nice services out there. I want to commend the staff of EMS for working through that. Mike, you guys did an excellent job, along with your staff, you and Greg, did a tremendous job keeping everybody together and putting that service together and getting through that, so thank you guys. All right, next, Department Heads and Elected Officials.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Chuck Zimmer. I'm the Director for the Delaware County High Tech Crimes Unit. Was here a couple months ago, and you guys approved some expansion space. I know Commissioner Reagan came out. We're at maximum density, and we've been examining using the space that was approved. Some limitations there. It's pretty bare bones, carpet and lights, it's about it. There's no electrical or networking or anything like that there, and it's a unique shape. Since then, we've had some discussions with Eric Hoffman and I, and Steve Foster, the Superintendent for the Buildings, and there are some space that I've been made aware of here in this building on the third floor, down in where adult probation was located. There's quite a bit of space on that side of the building available on that floor, and I'm seeking your approval to begin the process of expanding there. It'll have to go in phases, but we could go from a 216-square-foot lab to a much larger facility. There's potential there for training facilities. I'm out of the office quite frequently at trainings. We, that would give us the potential to host those trainings, ultimately bringing people down, back downtown.
Yeah.
And it also would free up some space that we're currently occupying in the Prosecutor's Office. I know the Council has approved some expansions for our office, the attorney area and stuff. I mean, they're going to have to go somewhere, so that would also free up that, so. Just seeking your approval to begin examining, expanding over here.
Yes, I just heard about that. That's the southwest corner and the courtroom, the old courtrooms there, and it's such a all-electric. There might be some new paint and carpet, but.
Right, I mean, we would probably gut it, because certain portions of it will have to be.
Yeah.
Secure before.
Right.
We have evidence, and the building's a different security nature than where we are now. But not seeking any funding. We're getting some grant money, the state's actually kicking out some more money that they had available for all the high-tech crimes units across the state, so.
Mr. Zimmer's contacted me about it. I don't, I mean, it's a, it's a good spot.
It's a good spot in downtown.
Empty.
It's empty, so.
How many you have on your staff now?
Me and two other analysts. It would just change the game for us. We're, I've spoken with Ball State, have a relationship with David Waugh, who's the Director of the CICS or the interim director. We're supposed to get some interns, but as you know, Sherri, there's, not sure where I would put them currently.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I moved that we'd start that procedure.
Second.
We have a motion for the approval of Chuck's group to move here and a second. Rule call, please.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other Department Heads, elected officials? We have our Ways and Measures Monthly Report. Everybody take a look at that. The payment of claims, $1,321,937 and 1 penny, and ARP claims of $27,168.99.
Make a motion, payment of claims and also the ARP claims.
Second.
A motion to pay the claims and a second. Rule call, please.
Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Yes. Next, we have Stan Gaidel, I believe.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Stan Gaidel. I am a member of the Country Village Creekwood Neighborhood Association, and I'm here with my fellow Board Member, Marty Hillary, and we just wanted to take a minute of your time, Commissioners, to say thank you very much for all you have done for our neighborhood. I'm sure you recall, over the past few years, our Neighborhood Association has come before you with several requests for neighborhood improvements, and each time we approached you, you listened, you talked with us, you came out to our neighborhood, you visited with us, you offered a plan, and you completed that plan. you visited with us, you offered a plan, and you completed that plan. So because of you and what you did for our neighborhood, so much has changed for the better. I also want to offer a word of thanks to Tommy Humbert. I don't know if Tommy is here today.
I'm right there. I'm behind you. Green hat.
Tommy, thank you very much for all you've done as well. As you know, our community in northern Delaware County has about 370 homes and about 1,000 residents. And I can say with confidence that every single one of us is better off because of what you have done. So we greatly appreciate the very significant role you played in making Country Village Creequod the thriving neighborhood that it is today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Stan.
Sort of thanks for coming up here. We don't get that a lot. I know very seldom do the Commissioners get a thank you, and we're proud of the highway, Tommy Humbert and his guys, but we appreciate you coming up. All right, John, you see anything online?
Hang on just one second.
I've been a little slow this morning. Well, there's some questions about some of the ARP. One is, is Trailside Golf even open? And it is. I've driven by it. How will they be using, how will the ARP funds be used by three businesses? Have their plans. They are replacing equipment, upgrading areas in the area that somebody wants a deck. I think Cardinal Hills wants a deck. China Panda wants to upgrade their equipment, their restaurant equipment and the flooring. And Trailside Golf wants to expand some of their outdoor seating and patio area.
That all falls under the ARP plan.
It does. All fall within the ARP plan, and they're the type of businesses that really did suffer during the pandemic. And then then there's a comment about needing to continue working, filling up office space in the county building. So that's it. Bless you.
Bless you. Very good. A motion recessed.
Moved.
I'll second it. Rule call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Riggan. Ms. Henry.
Yes. Reciced.